I started stealing cable at my house. Is that enough for you to haul me out of here tonight? I'm kidding, because that might actually be like a felony.
Good memory, John. And we know it's my first time in this business.
I want to welcome everyone to the regular meeting one of the Swetar Township Board of Commissioners. It is September 3rd, 2005 at 7:14, and I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. And I do just want to say to you, please keep the Plissick family in your thoughts at this time. Mark Plissick, who was a longtime township employee, passed away recently, so just want to offer condolences. So, everyone, you can be seated. Secretary Savage, can you do a roll call?
Commissioner Tuckey.
Here.
Commissioner Zubek.
Here.
Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Vice President Steele.
Here.
President Ellis.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The board did have an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss personnel and potential litigation. We're up to item six, visitors' requests and comments. If you would like to speak, please come forward. You're going to write your name down and your address, as well as state your name and address for the record, and then you may begin your comments.
In High 710 Winding Lane. Forgive my tardiness, I wanted to be here last month, but my son decided to gut and rebuild his bathroom last month, so I couldn't get here. But what I wanted to come here, because it was, my parents brought me up, golden rule, you know, please and thank you. I forgot to say thank you for the board, for the police department, for the maintenance highway get it done department? I'm not quite sure, you know, what it is, but on what was done with Porter Lane. Porter Lane, back in June, was brought to the board's attention about tractor trailer parking. You immediately put in a request for a traffic survey with the police department, which was done promptly. That was then handed in to the board, and you guys voted unanimously to approve it. The signage was done quickly, very quickly. I'm not used to government working so quickly. And, and, and everything was kumbaya. But I don't think anybody came up here to say thank you to you all. And I'm here just to say thank you to all of you for what you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time?
Okay. I attended the budget meeting last night. There weren't any times for public comments, so I'm going to make a public comment now. Have you all seen the movie Animal House? That's what that was when they start, when people started asking questions about the fire budget. When Dean Warmer's in the meeting room, and in the Animal House, whatever they call it, was in there and diverted everything from what was asked to what was really asked. Now, that's all I'm going to say. But from now on, if I come up here, I'm going to say comedy. That's why I'm not going to call anybody any names or anything like that, so that, just address the questions that are asked, please. Now, there was a, here, this is serious. There was a fire up on Simpson, that's Simpson, right, Debbie? Perfect picture. That house was on the edge of the township. Our mutual aid companies came in, the two, three mutual aid pieces right out front, a suburban Tahoe right in the front yard for command. Perfect picture. Now, what I have a concern is, is this is why Chambers Hill Fire Company needs opened, and a piece needs to be put up at Chambers Hill. You don't have the mutual aids as close as you do at that end of the township as you do west of the 7,000 block of Chambers Hill Road and south of Chambers Hill Road. That could have been a disaster up there on Simpson if it wasn't for our mutual aid companies, which work fine, and you have to have mutual aid, you can't get around it these days. But, Madam President, I ask you as a young mother, if you live down in that lower part of Chambers Hill, you'd have to have something in the middle of the night to get your kids out of a house. Quick response. And you're not going to get that quick response at that end of the township.
I lost a home to fire as a child, and I lived right down the street from a firehouse, so...
Exactly, you live right down, those poor people don't live right down the street from the firehouse.
Right, but that was also with home responders. So, we're moving toward something to make it so that that doesn't happen.
As last night, in your presentation, you cited NFPA requirements to do this, this, and this. NFPA, was it 1701, Debbie?
What standard?
1701, the response time.
1710?
Huh?
10, I believe it is.
01, I think's paid.
I think it's 10.
10's volunteer, anyway. The pay, the pay department is four minutes to the scene from the time of dispatch. Now, we're not paid yet, but we are working toward that situation and having people up at Chambers Hill, even if it's you have the people that have Talos responding to go to that station so that you man a piece, but it's that important, that somebody's going to get hurt up there. And I'm telling you right now, I hope it's not serious. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments?
Joanne Seibert, 799 High Street in Bressler. Recently, Laura Paxton Township Fire Bureau of Fire issued the following statement on the Facebook page, their Facebook page. "Starting January 2026, the Laura Paxton Township Bureau of Fire and its cooperating fire companies Colonial Park, Pextonia, Lingels Town Fire Companies will cooperate under a unified organization chart and chain command, bringing career and volunteer firefighters together as one seamless team. This millstone is the result of hard work and collaboration between fire companies and township staff to create a system that works for everyone while still honoring each company's individual pride and history. They ended it no separation, no barriers, just one mission, protecting our community. Since you like to, seem to like to mimic Laura Swetar Paxton Township, this would have been a very good one to mimic. It probably is too late for Lawton and Bressler, but it could still mimic their policy that would involve Chambers Hill." I believe the budget is online, but I believe the budget is online, but I'm too busy to sit down and examine it. I would like to know the following concerning the National Night Out, Family Fun Day, and Memorial Day fireworks events and the multiple pop-up barbecues. Are they privately funded, or are they being funded by our tax dollars? How many man-hours are involved for township staff to set up and tear down? Are they volunteering their time, or are they being paid? And if so, how many hours are overtime? If they are funded by the township, where can these expenses be found in the budget? I saw that the Lingels Town Fire Company will no longer participate, partially fund their firework event because of the multiple arrests and bad behavior of some of the attendees in the past years. That might start happening here if Swetara's event gets larger, just be aware. Plus, having a beer garden at any township event can hardly be considered family-friendly. Adding alcohol to the mix can never be a good thing. I have, I've had dogs practically all my life, and they don't like fireworks. So, I never was fond of them either. This year, the poor German Shepherd that lives behind me, who has just a horrible owner, was left outside during this event. I own the German Shepherd, and it was probably very traumatizing for him. So, while some of you out there are having fun, there are many more of us who are not fond of the event, especially our four-legged residents.
Thank you.
Zoloftus, 5631 Plainview Drive. As of this morning, I didn't see any updated minutes on the webpage. The last minutes were from like June 11th. When can we anticipate having updated commission meeting minutes on the website?
I'll get the July ones on by tomorrow.
Okay, so that we'll have July.
And then we'll get the ones that are approved tonight, we'll get them all on tomorrow.
Okay.
I do apologize about that, I noticed that as well, but I didn't have a copy of the signed ones, so.
Okay.
That's, that's on me.
Okay. Then, also, I did speak at the planning commission meeting, and I did hand out some, some, I did an informal analysis on data centers and what some of the townships and counties are doing with planning, and I did hand them out. And I heard I was a bit ridiculed after my presentation, regrettably. You know, everybody's entitled to their opinion, and I respect that. However, I still would like to have Zach come back to me with reasoning as to why or why not we can, we can or cannot incorporate some of those suggestions into our zoning for data centers. And I do have here, if you haven't already received my suggestions, I'd be happy to give those to you. Okay? It's unfortunate, you know, it's unfortunate that the golf course is going to be plowed under for a big data center. And it's unfortunate that this township and county has kind of taken the mantra of chop it down and plow it under, who needs green space for the future, right? So, I was just on, I was just in Philadelphia last week. And it's curious that the Philadelphians have taken a different perspective on preserving green space and making communities, uplifting communities. There is a new project in Philadelphia, and it's called Cobb's Creek, and I recommend everybody to go and look at it. Because what they're doing is they're bringing in golf and other activities into the middle of Philadelphia, and they're putting in an 18-hole course, a nine-hole course, simulators, there's a lab, there's a lab there for kids to learn about the game, as well as, not just people who are coming there, but they're looking to serve the underprivileged, who would not ordinarily be involved in that kind of activity. So, it's an interesting concept, and I would encourage everybody to look at it. Preserving green space is incredibly important, you know, we need that for our future, you know? We need it for our property values, you know, those poor people who are living along Harrisburg Pike, their property values are going to go whoop way down, you know? So, that's why I want to have these suggestions seriously looked at. The other thing that I have, I was just, I was just walking in. Is anybody taking care of the weeds outside? I don't know, it's, it's, it's a trivial thing. But I do do all the plantings over at the American Legion, and I would never let the American Legion start looking like what it is out there. You've even got wild sumac out there. It's, you know, come on. Let's have a little pride, okay? All right, so, would anybody like the suggestions? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other visitors' requests and comments at this time? All right, I don't see anyone jumping up. We'll go ahead and move on to item seven.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda and remove item 12.
We had a request to table, not remove, so, you want to...
I figured you can come, okay, you want, you want a table?
Yeah, that was, that was the request from the engineering company that I received via email.
Then I'll resend that motion, I make a motion to approve the agenda, tabling item 12.
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda's approved with item 12 tabled. We are up to item eight, motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're up to item nine, consideration of the minutes, we have the regular meeting one of August 6, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're up to item 10, building and codes plans, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Director Hall.
Madam President, if I could, I'll make a motion to approve 10A and B, and if you're okay with the director speaking under our discussion and add it to my motion, just to make sure they met all township requirements for the release.
Second. Sure.
All right, you can go ahead, yeah.
Sure. So, the first is for a finance security reduction for 8198 Chambers Hill Road, better known as GW Signs, 4,000 square foot sign shop. I just have a couple more things I need to work on, mostly grass, which still needs time to grow right now, so.
Thank you, does anyone have anything? We'll go back to these two items.
No, I mean, I got a discussion under consideration, financial security release. We just have a few remaining, so I'm just under discussion here. I'd like to thank you and Brittany for the job that you did to, I mean, I think they dated back to almost two thousand, somewhere 2010, even beyond, so that's a good job, clean up all that stuff, and then, I forgot while we were in executive session to discuss the other topic, but I'll get with Madam President to see if we can have an executive session after I speak to the Chair of Zoning and Code about some of the discussion that we need to have further for the financial security releases, but, so the public knows, I mean, you guys did a lot of work, and it took a lot of time, I mean, I think we're six, seven months in from when we started the project, and just a few left remaining, like that's outstanding, so thank you. And essentially, you gotta think about it this way, you got a lot of money off our books that we were holding on to.
Right.
And a lot of bank accounts that Brittany had to administratively manage that we could have released, so, job well done to you two, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have something for GW Signs. I just wanna see if the lighting situation can be evaluated for nighttime, when you're, when you're coming, like if you're coming from Hershey, and you're at the light, the lights that they have, I just wanna make sure that they're not a distraction or, or an issue for, for drivers, especially since we're about to have a ramp closed and more construction in that area.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? All right, hearing, nothing, I'll go ahead and, well, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Not used to short agendas. We're up to item eleven, approval of the 2025-2026 PennDOT Municipal Snow Removal Agreement.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, by way of discussion, this is something that we do every year, PennDOT will compensate us to plow the state roads that are in the township, so.
By way of discussion, is this good, Kevin?
Thank you. Yes, it, it's a good agreement. PennDOT asked for a five-year agreement this year. Previously, it was a one-year agreement, and each of the five years will increase by 2%. Last year's agreement was $24,560-some, this year it's up to 25,060, next year 25,562, following year 26,073, fourth year 26,594, and then last year of the agreement is 27,126. Then the Solicitor, Cooker East, has reviewed it. According to the agreement, I don't wanna speak for, for the Solicitor, but the, the agreement will auto-renew if both, both parties are in agreement at the end of five years, so.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
When you say auto-renew, is it gonna auto-renew continuing the 2% increases?
Correct.
Or, I guess my only question is, was it averaged 2% prior to this new agreement, or what was it based on before?
I could only see the 2024 number, that's all I have access to, but I don't wanna assume, but I believe that's, that's what it was.
Okay, yeah, my only concern is like the cost of salt and, you know, wear and tear on our equipment and things like that, I just wanna make sure that whatever we're doing is commensurate with use of our township resources.
Yes, I certainly don't, don't disagree. I know last year, and I haven't seen the updated salt bids from CapCog and Co-Stars, but I know last year's salt held the line, but certainly fuel, you know, and maintenance is a concern, so.
Well, I'm willing to, you know, I guess obviously if we do this tonight, it's gonna be five years, but I definitely would like us to keep an eye on it.
We will.
And are there any clawback provisions, or is a five years, five years?
Again, I didn't read, and I'm certainly not a, an attorney, but...
Well, maybe a solicitor could answer that, 'cause I am, I am curious if there's a, any type of clawback provision in that agreement.
I, I do recall, and I think we can look for it, but we only do the full big agreement, and I could swear every year they still send in something with the, any other increased road mileage or increased percentage every year that we vote on as well, 'cause this is the first time.
We, this is, we've done that every year, but this is the first time we're doing it for five years.
We got the big agreement, right, 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 but I think they still will, I think they will still send in, you have to double-check that, that yearly agreement that updates the additional miles that we put out there as well.
I do recall last year there was an amendment, or an addendum to the, to the agreement.
Yes, and I believe they increased the amount when we got that too, but again, just slightly, but.
Okay, yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
So in response to the one question, the term is five years, there's no early-out option for the township, it's a five-year commitment.
Okay, so.
Just because you could've just given a thumbs up, I was having trouble reading the size of some of the numbers.
Well, that's why I took a picture of it with my phone.
Just to answer, I, I, I don't wanna confuse this, we've added some areas over, so, so the, when you look up the price, it, it probably, the amount of money we received would've increased when an additional area was, was picked up.
Added, correct.
That we handled, so, I don't know that we could just get a, one set number per year and be comparable, but if there is a year where nothing was added, could, could you follow through with Commissioner Zubek, and just see if, if there was a built-in increase?
I can, yes.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in that, but.
I can, I can respond to that as well, at least as far as this agreement is written, I can't speak to years past, 'cause I wasn't involved, but the agreement spells out the number of, they call it snow lane miles, that they expect the township to be required to clear, and provides the price. The price can be adjusted if the snow lane mileage changes, if there's new roadways put in that would be state roads that the township has to clear, or what have you, that price can go up. And there's also a provision that allows for an adjustment in the event of a severe weather, or severe winter event, rather, where there may be additional payment warranted. To be honest, I don't love that language, 'cause it kinda leaves it up to PennDOT to decide if they wanna pay you more money or not, and what are the chances of that?
Sounds like PennDOT.
But, I mean, those are the couple of built-in reasons why that money could change separate from the 2% annual increase.
Yes, I mean, that, that's a little bit helpful, I think, I just, I, you know, I guess I'm just waiting for the blizzard in 93 or something, you know, but...
Do not jinx us.
Me and you both.
Knock on wood.
Thank, thank you.
Commissioner Conley, I think you made the second, if, if, I would like to resend my motion to this, and then ask the Solicitor a question and change the motion on this if you'll resend yours.
I'll resend that.
Steve, I think this is de minimis in nature, but this should actually read approval of resolution for 2025-2026 PennDOT Municipal Snow Removal Agreement, so I was gonna make a motion to amend the agenda that that would read as a resolution, if that's de minimis in nature and allow.
Do we have a resolution?
We do, PennDOT always provides one, there's one in the far back of the page, and they normally, they normally want us to go with their standard resolution for these agreements.
That would be fine.
Okay.
The meat of the item is the agreement itself, and that was on the agenda, so no issue with amending that to be an approval of the resolution.
I'll second that.
Madam President, I'm gonna make a motion that item 11, state approval of resolution 2025-2026 PennDOT Municipal Snow Removal Agreement.
Second.
All right, we have a second, we'll vote on the amendment and then the...
All right, just discussion on that, it helps when it's time to get paid. They, they wanna see the resolution, so, do it now, and we're in good shape, so.
All right, we have a motion to amend item 11 to read approval of a resolution. Do we have any further discussion?
No, just, just for clarification, we're just, it's de minimis in nature because we are just amending it to be a resolution, and then the vote, it would still remain the same, but I just wanted to clarify that for the public so that we're within the 24 hours.
Yes. All right, does anyone have anything else before we vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now, we're gonna train the motion to approve a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion with regard to the snow removal agreement? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that will be Resolution R-2025-46. And we've tabled item 12, so now we're up to 13 appointments to boards and commissions, this appears on our agenda at every meeting. We'll go to item 14, visitors' requests and comments. If anyone has comments, feel free to come forward, and then state your name and address, and then you may begin.
799 High Street, beautiful Village of Bressler. I would caution everybody when exiting, I think there'll be lightning strikes if this meeting ends up so, so quickly.
Don't jinx us, I can.
So, be careful when walking, good, there might be some ominous over there. And basically, my comments now probably doesn't apply to this meeting, but I'm sure it will apply to all future. If you want the citizens to stay involved with the township and come to meetings or watch them online, please learn how to speak briefly. Some just like to hear themselves talk. You really need to think about those of us who are physically here or those listening online. At least the ones watching online can turn you off or just fall asleep. Last meeting, one commissioner said that they were going to make a brief statement, but it took 5 minutes and 24 seconds, and to make the brief statement and managed to say the word "um" 44 times. That is one "um" every 7.3 seconds. In their closing statement, which was 10 minutes and 44 seconds, there were 63 "ums" at that closing statement, that is a one every 10.3 seconds. That tells me that you are talking off the cuff and don't have, know where your next thought is coming from. A prepared statement would be, probably be briefer and to the point. I know it is an art to avoid "um" when you speak. If you want to hear how that sounds, just listen to Archbishop Fulton Sheen or Vivek Ramaswamy. In the President's closing statement, she took over 13 out of her 14 minutes to discuss an issue that was so vague and so lacking of detail. I know I was lost for 12 of those 13 minutes. If there, if there were issues she couldn't discuss in public, why even bring it up? It was so long that it made my eyes roll to the back of my head. I can only hope and pray that tonight's meeting, which I, we hoped and prayed, so it came true, it wouldn't, that, that wouldn't be repeated. It was also said at the last meeting that there was a nepotism policy in the township. Really? Very interesting.
Thank you. Not everyone can be as skilled of a public speaker as you, Ms. Seabert. Do we have any other public requests and comments at this time? All right, hearing none, we're up to item 15, possible stormwater violations for investigation, this is also on our agenda for every meeting, and at any time anyone notices a stormwater violation or issue, can always send in correspondence to our website, and we can take care of that as well. We're up to 16, commissioners' requests and comments, additional business and correspondence. Commissioner Tuckey?
I'd like to give my sincere condolences to Mark Plastics' family, friends, and Bressler's Fire Company members. I, I appreciate everything Mark did for our community for years, and he definitely will be missed. I also like to thank Bressler Fire Company for everything they did to help in Plastics' time of need, and I, I just appreciate everyone that contributes and helps our community. I'd like to, getting to, I'll try to keep it short tonight, but Mary Klaus has been at quite a few of these meetings recently, requesting that this board takes a vote to see where everyone stands either way of, either members are okay with defunding Chambers Hill Fire Company, or keeping it funded through the township's resources, the taxpayers' I really have issues personally, having one commissioner making that decision, Commissioner Conley, he does oversee the fire and police, but one person should not be making these decisions, in my opinion, completely. It should be this board, we constantly have budget issues coming up in front of us, we are working through next year's budget, and I believe that should be a decision made by all members of this board. So I'd like to make a motion to allow 40% of expenses, fire-related, be still paid to Chambers Hill Fire Company for fire-related expenses.
Second.
If I may, given recent changes to the Sunshine Act, it would be inappropriate to make that motion, since it's not on the agenda for tonight's meeting, and there's no, because it involves the expenditure of public funds, an exception for an emergency or things like that would not apply, so I would suggest it needs to wait until next week's meeting.
I'll rescind my second, if I may be allowed to make a comment just on his statement, Madam President.
Would, would you be able to do it and address it during yours?
I would allow Commissioner Zubek to do that.
Okay, yeah. It's, it's just really gonna be a brief comment, I, I actually agree with the rest of the audience, I have a more lengthy comment that I wanna make on a different issue, but I, I do wanna just say that I do think that the decision should be up to the board, we don't have to vote, make a motion tonight, but I do want the board, for you, to consider the issue, maybe even reach out to Mary Klaus and get her thoughts on it, she has stood up here several meetings, asking for some type of action or response, I just wanna see if you can graciously offer her your time, or at least bring it up for consideration at a future meeting, for discussion.
Did she go on her mission?
She is, she is.
She won't be, I don't, assuming she's not gonna be here.
I don't know how long, but I do know she's not gonna be here, but I, I'm assuming she would still want us to...
Right.
At least take the issue up, or reach out to one of the representatives there.
The only thing I'll say is I don't wanna do it while she's not here, so, if it's something that's considered in October, just because then we can make sure.
If, if, if Chambers Hill is able to, you know, wait that long, that would be fine, but it is a decision, I think, that was made unilaterally, and so, just asking the board to, you know, look into and ensure that we're following protocol, so, thank you.
Yep.
Good, take my time back for comments.
Yep.
Thank you. I would respectfully request that it be on next week's agenda, simply because currently, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, some of the stuff has already, their expenses have not been covered. Is that correct? If I may have an answer to, Brittany, may I have an answer to that, was some of the expenses not been covered recently, over the past month and a half?
I know that they were working out billing arrangements, but I'm not exactly sure where they left off, but... they left off, but I believe that they are making stuff on their own.
So respectfully, I would...
I can get an exact answer.
I believe they have bills that are not being paid by the township anymore, and they are currently paying them. So that's the reason I would respectfully ask for this vote to be taken next meeting Yeah, I did say yeah. Look, I personally have issues with not supporting Chambers Hill Fire Company. I understand if you want to go a lower percentage because they have the halls downstairs. That's why I suggested 40% of the overall fire-related expenses. Chambers Hill Fire Company is working towards getting back to where we need to have them to help the community. And they have a new member right now, from my understanding, got quite a few certifications just in a short span of time. And those members can bring other members into the facility. That's how, from what I've seen in the past, you have fire companies grow is when you start getting more people active. And I believe they are seriously on the right direction to be doing that. And for the community's sake, I don't see why we wouldn't do that. It's the taxpayers' dollars paying it. I can understand the disagreement because, you know, not paying the full batch because they have hall rentals downstairs. But 40% is very reasonable to request, along with insurance, insuring the vehicles that are being used for fire calls. Just hope we seriously look at everything before we make these decisions. And the fireworks event, I thought it was a decent event. I went there and saw many people in the community. It was nice seeing lots of people out there. Catching up with a lot of friends, and it was just end of the night. I understand, Ms. Seabert, what you said about the fireworks and the dogs, but I did like them. I mean, I don't have anything against the dogs, but it was a decent event overall from what I participated in. And I just hope everyone in the community continues to keep getting involved. And if you have any questions, concerns, or issues, please keep reaching out to me. I will continue to keep helping you if you have issues in our community. And thanks to staff, everyone involved with the events that we've been having. I know it takes a lot, and it's a lot of extra work on top of your already list of responsibilities you have. So thank you, and I appreciate it, and you have a good evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Zubek?
Yes, thank you. I have a few things tonight, and I'm going to try to be brief, but I might actually be the long-winded one tonight. So I'm going to give my apologies ahead of time. Ms. Loftus provided her recommendations on the data center. I also have been doing an extensive amount of research over the last couple of months since we've done our ordinance change, and I feel I've become quite knowledgeable in this issue, putting it lightly. But I do have a statement I would like to read and go through some of my suggestions and recommendations that I will present to the solicitor as well as our codes department, Zach, for review. So I'm going to get started here. As many of you know, when the zoning was changed in certain areas to allow for data centers, I was opposed because I didn't think our township had put enough thought into how the development would impact our residents and community as a whole. As I continue to do my own research, I am even more concerned, and I stated by my initial request for more safeguards to be put, I stand by my initial request for more safeguards to be put in place. I would like to emphasize that my top responsibility is always to the residents of Swatara Township. While I am a strong supporter of economic development and growth in our community, I am also cognizant of the need for strategic planning, smart growth, and to mitigate overdevelopment. My record on development speaks for itself with many projects that were started during my tenure on this board as president, some of which my colleagues opposed, such as Wawa on Route 322, of which colleagues opposed, such as, and the Harrisburg Exchange, in which it was argued against the zoning change there. Now they seem supportive, and after seeing what a well-thought-out plan is, I think there's even more support. There is a reason why there is a municipality's planning code. That is to guide us in planning, not to make uninformed decisions that could have future negative impact on our community. There is still time, and I am calling upon our solicitor and my colleagues on this board to do the right thing and do all you can to protect our residents and our community. There are many things we should have considered before zoning change, but there is still time to address many of the concerns. Rather than just changing the zoning, we could have specified that data centers are conditional use only permitted in commercial or industrial zones, like some of our neighboring municipalities. We can require data center developers to go through a special exception hearing before the zoning hearing board or a conditional use hearing before the Board of Commissioners, where residents would have the opportunity to present witnesses and cross-examine the developers' witnesses. It concerned me at the time that our board rushed into a zoning change and that our former solicitor, Wyland, came back just for the purpose of advising us on data centers when he himself has a financial stake in data center development. It did at the time and still does seem like a conflict of interest to me. And it was also evident that the zoning change for data centers, and especially at Dauphin Highlands Golf Course, would most certainly boost the property value for the county to sell. Coincidence or maybe not? Nonetheless, I am urging Solicitor Kokares and my colleagues on the board to consider the following. As a local municipality with local control, we need to use our land use authority to set zoning restrictions that take into consideration the location of data centers being built near sensitive areas, require data centers to use sustainable power and water sources, require noise mitigation for cooling systems, and require environmental impact studies for new projects. These actions can address concerns about air and noise pollution, increased traffic, water usage, and grid strain from energy-intensive data centers. As much as possible, we should restrict data center locations to industrial zones away from residential areas to minimize impacts like noise and traffic. Environmental regulations must be considered, and there is no responsibility than that of our local officials to consider the environment in which we live. Pertaining to water usage, I am requesting that our board require a thorough review of proposed water usage and capping water withdrawal and restricting water during drought emergencies. Specifically, I would like to require closed-loop cooling systems or other best practices to minimize water consumption. I would further like us to consider the implementation of ordinances to limit water consumption in general and require data centers to use non-potable water sources. Air quality, require data centers to use best available technology for backup generators and mandate stricter controls on air pollutants. Noise control, we must have proper noise ordinances to limit noise from cooling systems and generators, especially during construction and around residential areas. In the case of Dauphin Highlands, I would like our solicitor and township staff to further review our current noise ordinance to suggest specific decibel limits for daytime and nighttime operations as measured from property lines. Impact studies, we should require environmental impact assessments for new data center projects to identify and mitigate potential negative effects on the community and the environment. Specifically, I am requesting that our solicitor and staff come back to our board with language requiring the following studies, including, but not limited to, traffic, noise, electric, water quality, and usage. Infrastructure planning, both our township, our engineer, and the developer must work with utility companies to ensure that the grid can handle the increased power demand from data centers, preventing increased energy costs for residents. I would like to amend our ordinance to establish increased setbacks from residential areas to mitigate noise and visual pollution. In addition, I would like to require pre-screening for rooftop and ground-mounted equipment and/or best practices. I would like to request that prior to application, a data center developer must engage in negotiations with the electric company and provide documentation affirming that the data center will directly contract and pay for their costs and any upgrades to electrical infrastructure that provides cost stabilization and benefits to all ratepayers. Community benefits, we, as Board of Commissioners, in our capacity have the ability to and most certainly should negotiate agreements that provide local benefits, such as funding for local infrastructure improvements to offset any potential negative impacts on the community. Revenue, we have heard many stories about the amount of money we may or may not generate from the location of a data center in our municipality. I still have my reservations, especially if we do not include the above considerations. What can we expect in terms of revenue? How much can we expect in building permit fees? Future assessed value for real estate can be determined by contacting a Dauphin County Tax Assessment Office, and I would like to make this a stipulation upon application from a data center. Include estimated amounts that will go to state, county, school district, and municipality. Note that Dauphin County will receive 45 million from the sale of the property, and we're guaranteed none other than what we have in place as far as our tax structure. Prior to any project, but especially with a project of this scope and magnitude, I would like to request that we are provided an estimate of what financial benefit a municipality will receive with data center location, including estimated business privilege tax revenue, if applicable. Tax based on gross receipts is what business privilege tax is based off of. It's typically calculated based on a business's gross receipts, not on their profits. And I would like to reiterate that these are not retail establishments. A data center's gross receipts would be the total revenue it receives from all sources during an accounting period without subtracting costs or expenses. For a data center, this can include revenue from hosting and colocation services, fees for cloud computing and other data services, revenue from specialized services like managed security or consulting. And I would like data centers to provide what their expectations are so that we can calculate how much revenue that we're going to be receiving. Equipment replacement, it is my understanding that much of the equipment can have a lifespan of 15 years, some maybe more. I would like to require data center developers to provide an itemized list of equipment that will be required at the facility, lifespan, and replacement plans. I would also like Dauphin County to address how the equipment from data centers will be replaced, dismantled, or disposed of when it has reached its full lifespan or upon closure of any data center. I respectfully request that our board consider all of these comments that I've made this evening. I've spoken with residents. I think many people share the same concerns. I'm not opposed to a data center. I'm not opposed to development. I just want good community partners, and I think that asking them to consider these things as much transparency as possible moving forward makes the community comfortable, and it helps us get to a comfortable place as they're responsible for our community. So I just wanted to, I will submit this at a later time. I wanted to make a couple of changes, but I'm going to be submitting that to the solicitor as well as Zach. And then I also wanted to just finish out by saying I too attended the fireworks event. I understand there's, every year, there's concerns regarding our four-legged friends, and I completely understand, which is why I actually wanted to do the fireworks event three years ago, because I had heard from people in the community that were concerned about other people having their own shows in their backyard. And I thought that an event, Labor Day, was the least used by neighboring municipalities would be the ideal time, and it would give an opportunity to have an events show so that people didn't have their own random shows. Thought it might cut down on some of that. I did have a question from some residents on the cost for the fireworks. I can't speak for the last two years. It was always an event that was expected to grow, though, I think. The first year, we kept it pretty simple, pretty streamlined, because it was the first year, and we wanted to gauge what the success was. And in that first year, we did not use any tax dollars. It was sponsors that provided the funding for that event. So just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, my first year was sponsors. I think it's a great event. Whatever concerns, I hope we can work things out. But I do want to thank all of the staff, police, fire, everyone who attended. It was a great event. Couldn't have asked for a more beautiful day. I think that was ordered as well. But I, and then finally, I would like to extend again my condolences to the Plasic family, the Bressler community, the entire community as a whole, as well as the, you know, Swatara Township staff that served with Mark and worked with him, and he was a good man, and he should be remembered as an exemplary employee and a gentleman in our community. So thank you very much, and have a safe evening. Drive home this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley?
Yeah, I'll start with offering my condolences to Mark Plasic's family and friends. I'm fortunate to be able to take a lot of pictures at events, so I captured some of Mark over the years, and I see we got that on the township Facebook page. 40 years here, incredible job, and I know his family and friends are hurting. I think our employees that knew him well were also hurting, so offering those condolences. I just want to address what Commissioner Zubek said. The conditional use, we've had that situation. We had conditional use on the Smithland Development. When they applied for conditional use hearing, the Board of Commissioners rejected that. So we had conditional use. We had some tools in place to put restrictions on them. The board that rejected them happened during a time period that Commissioner Zubek was the president of the board, and Mr. Tuckey was on the board. So unfortunately...
Actually, it was rejected the first time.
They failed in those duties to protect the public, so that plan went through.
Guess it doesn't matter.
Now, after a year of public hearings, meetings, Planning Commission, Township, and the Dauphin County General Authority, who owns the land, which they recently sold, we don't own the land, it was mixed use since 2011. Not one person sitting up here was on the board in 2011. It was zoned mixed use. We didn't have a place in the township for a data center. So by law, that meant a data center could go anywhere. And I understand some of the concerns, great thoughts, but to put data centers in the industrial areas, the places that are developed, they already have things there, along the railroad track to Dairy Street, Eisenhower Boulevard on this end, Paxton Street. Not sure how we would put data centers in those areas. So by law, we were required to have a location for the data center use. Communities have to have a place for every single use. You can't just decide you don't like a certain use. The board, with the guidance of Planning Commission, our codes, zoning, planning staff, Mr. Golden, and prior to Mr. Golden, Mr. Eline, and our legal counsel, came up with some guidelines, some protections, some things to make an area in the township, two areas that were at the far end of the township. I live on Harrisburg Street, on the same end of the township. But there were open space areas there that had access to water, potentially sewer, but already had the PP&amp;L power structure and the fiber needed. So after the fact, you could say, well, I would like these things to be somewhere else. Maybe you don't want them at all, and I may be in that category. But by law, you're required to have a place for every single use. So with guidance from a lot of people, we put the use where it would be the least disruptive to the residents of Swatara Township. If we were to put a data center... If we were to put a data center in an industrial area, say the railroad went out of business, and that's our industrial area, and we want to put a data center there, well, now we have to bring the power lines there, the fiber, the water, the things that are already in place in the other spots. So sometimes, the decision might not be the best decision for everyone, but it could still be the best decision for the township. So there were lots of opportunities to speak up. I'm not opposed to strengthening things, putting buffers in, but this seems to come up sometimes after the fact, and the commissioner that spoke before me talked about the Wawa. I was a citizen. It was a Haas's. I liked Haas's. It was near a park. It has a stream there. It was never a gas station, service station. In fact, on the other side of the creek, there was one in Hummels Towne with a much higher bank, and it was flooded. It was a 7-Eleven. It never reopened as a gas station. That concerned me, that in the floodplain area that we know had gone to twenty-eight feet, that the Board of Commissioners was going to allow a gas station to go there.
It was not in the floodplain.
Yes, I had concerns. It went right past the board. There was no protections put in there since then, since I've come back on the board. And again, that board included Commissioner Tuckey and Commissioner Zubek, and you can look up the minutes. There were no protections put in for the public. After I came on the board and it was a done deal, we were able to negotiate lower number of gas pumps, so making it smaller for some traffic concerns. We were able to negotiate a deceleration lane, because I didn't think that was a good place. There was a barrier put up. Years ago, there was an accident when that barrier was opened. People died there. It's a one-way place. I didn't think it was the best place as a citizen, but as an elected official, I was faced with the consequences of other elected officials allowing it to be zoned.
Please, I had asked for a deceleration lane.
I have not interrupted anybody, no matter what they said tonight.
Oh, my gosh.
So now we're going to make that a gas station.
This is getting ridiculous.
And also, I worked with a neighboring municipality, Hummels Towne, to sign it that truck traffic wouldn't go to the right. It is westbound 322. If a truck comes off there, it goes right into Wawa.
That was the proposal.
The idea is for it to go back. So again, we can say we want to add protections, but when we're in a position of power, apparently we don't have the same concern. We have a warehouse facility on Eisenhower Boulevard now. It should have been on fifteen acres. During the time that they were in, it was touted as a ten-acre, reduced it to ten acres as an office park.
Really?
We have two people who've applied to use that.
When did that happen?
And both of them are warehousing. Both uses are warehousing. So it's one thing to sit here and say you have concerns. It's another thing to vote that way and back it up and show the public.
You wanted a warehouse at the Harrisburg Mall, though. You were really anxious about that.
I was against the warehousing at the Harrisburg Mall.
I had video.
By right, by right. I was for it as conditional use, but I was in the audience like the people are tonight.
Questioning why it wasn't going to be a warehouse.
And these two switched it to by right. And these are all in the minutes. Everything I'm saying is in the minutes.
You were opposed to the zoning change so they could put Flexface in.
Okay, so I wasn't going to say any of that. That's all in response...
You should tell the truth.
...to what I heard. What I was going to say is, the comment about the beer garden, we didn't have a beer garden this year. So people that like beer were disappointed. The reason we didn't have a beer garden is because so many other municipal governments had beer gardens, and we couldn't book anybody. So to come across like that's a problem, that you're having a beer garden, we're in competition with other places when they have events, and we couldn't book anybody. So I looked it up. Over the same period of time, neighboring municipalities, the city's Capona, Dolphin County recently had two events with beer. I don't drink alcohol, never did, but I'm not opposed to a beer garden at an event when people are enjoying themselves. So I just want to point that out, that a lot of times, people object to things that really are personal preferences. I want to thank everybody involved in the Labor Day fireworks. Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Kevin, Brendan, Commissioner Steele, obviously the Police Department Superintendent Stalfer, Mike in the Fire Department, mutual aid companies, our fire police, a lot of planning. But I also want to thank our citizens that volunteered and people that donated to the event. That all goes into making it a success. We had several members of our police advisory council there. We were fortunate to, again, receive tents from Mr. Sean Gold, business owner in Steelton, the Big Tent, and then another twenty-by-thirty. We were lucky that it was dry. Last year, we needed the tents, and we didn't have them positioned in the places that we should have had them. So it worked out a lot better this year. The weather was absolutely incredible. The range that people could see the fireworks from is very expansive. We're seeing people that took videos from neighboring municipalities, hearing from people in the township that were able to enjoy it at their home. As Commissioner Zubek said, the event has grown each year. It's more of a family fun festival. It's one day. We see other communities do longer events. Maybe at some point, we'd be able to do multiple days, but I think it was the perfect time on the perfect night, and I can't thank everybody enough for that. The comments about Chambers Hill Fire Company, and one person voting not to pay Chambers Hill Fire Company, I have no idea when the vote was taken or who the one person is. So that, we'll start with, that's really not true. What happened with Chambers Hill is they had been taken out of service in '22, January of '22. They were taken off the box. They struggled for people. Wasn't corrected in '22, wasn't corrected in '23. Not saying they didn't try and they didn't work hard. I wasn't on this board in '22 or '23. So there was plenty of time for people on the board to fix it if they really wanted to fix it. In '24, I was asked if I could help fix the situation. I worked on it for well over a year. It involved Chief Everson, the Fire Service Board, the citizens on the Fire Service Board, and a lot of people connected to Chambers Hill Fire Company. We were working towards an agreement that the township would pay one hundred percent, one hundred percent, of all expenses related to fire protection for the citizens of Swatara Township. Not forty percent. It was forty percent of their overall expenses, and they do fundraising and they rent the building, but it was one hundred percent of the fire-related expenses. Township was okay with that. That forty percent of the total was set by representatives of Chambers Hill, to be clear. Chambers Hill, no one on the board, there never was a vote. Chambers Hill said forty percent. We didn't measure the building. We didn't say it was forty-one or thirty-nine. We agreed with the forty. And then they took it back to their board to vote on it, and we were informed here at the township that they rejected that deal. At that point, all the bills had already been put in their name for them to pay so we could reimburse forty percent. Contrary to what Mr. Tuckey said, I don't know that they have an expense related to fire that they've given to us, because there really isn't a fire expense there now that they've rejected us being able to use that facility. So we're mixing two things up. I'm glad to talk about it at a future date. There's a Fire Board meeting September 23rd, public meeting. You could come to that. But the story about one person, you have to have the majority of the board, just basically.
And you never brought it in front of the board.
You have to have the majority of the board.
I guess you don't need the majority.
I'm being interrupted again. I'm being interrupted again by people who...
Because you lie all the time, sir.
No, no, I'm not lying. You, I'm going to be nice here, you started off with inaccurate information.
It's a hundred percent accurate.
There's five people here. To vote to do something, you need three of the...so there was no vote. I certainly didn't vote on acting myself.
Like the vehicles you purchased without board approval?
It's a dictatorship.
And they're just going to keep trying to distract you with these little quips about things that they are very defensive about. And I'm just trying to go through comments that were made tonight. The comments about Lower Paxton and their fire department, three, three fire departments, I believe that's what I had heard tonight, fifty-five thousand people, three great fire departments, great volunteers, still, they had a need for paid firefighters. So that's what they're going with. Township is running two fire stations right now, less than thirty thousand people, so it's very comparable. So to say that that's a model that we should, would work with, Chief Everson works with Lower Paxton. They're on the same page. Lower Paxton just put out some information about the command vehicles and the Tahos and how important they are. We have people on this board that were against that. So I stand by my votes. I stand by my public comments when I was a citizen, and certainly my elected official comments. To hear things that are completely distorted, inaccurate, week after week, I say do the work. If you wanted something in an ordinance about a data center, for the last year, you probably should have been working on that. When I was elected in '24, it was already in the process of changing codes, zoning, planning. I got involved in that. I go to the meetings. Not sitting up here. I sit in the audience at those. I don't know that I've missed a Planning Commission meeting in the last two years. I came to all the meetings as a citizen when I wasn't on the board, and I did it ten years before I was on the board. I came to meetings for ten years before I was elected to this board. So when you get here, and then you're talking about the things that should have happened, it's a lot like that Monday morning quarterbacking after the Super Bowl. Do the work ahead of time, steadily improve yourself and your ideas, put things out that you can build on. Don't show up after the game has been decided and say what you would have done. Thanks, everybody, for coming out and listening to this meeting. Listening to this meeting online. Thank you very much.
You'd have to ask for you to improve yourself.
Thank you. Vice President Steele?
There's a lot of room for improvement there, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, everybody that came out, and also those that logged online with us and enjoyed the evening with us. I'm going to be brief. I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I won't be here to the end of the meeting and hear the rest of the comments. I have to work at nine, something that came up, so I have to work tonight, so I'll be cutting out right after my comments. I'm going to start off by saying thank you to the police, the fire, the EMS, our volunteers that helped out with the fireworks night. I think it was a beautiful event, and if I'm not mistaken, Chief Stalfer, zero incidents again, I mean, that's great, especially when you're hearing about the incidents they're having at other fireworks events. I'm not going to poke fun at other municipal governments, but I think the public doesn't understand or know the planning that goes into that event. And the planning that goes into that event, meetings had started for that event almost eight months ago. And the most important piece of our meeting, the planning part, was safety and security of the residents. And that took place, two meetings a month, and leading up to the event, once we were in the month that the event was going to happen, there was a meeting every week. So I think the community should be proud of the public service individuals that we have for fire, EMS, and police. The amount of effort that went into making sure that that event was secure. I mean, most people didn't even see you had drones flying overhead, you had undercover officers roaming through the crowd, you had, you know, uniformed officers, you had fire, you had EMS, you had a multi-jourist dictional incident command system set up on the top of the hill, and that takes a lot of effort. Looking into our public safety, I'm only going to touch very, very briefly on the Chambers Hill situation that was brought up, because this is something that I've talked about for the last almost two years. A decision has to be made. What that decision is, that needs to be discussed between this five. It's not something that is worthy of public debate yet. I think there needs to be some conversations with the president of Chambers Hill Fire Company. I agree with all my colleagues up here. I think there needs to be some discussion, like my colleague just got done with his comments, with the Swatara Fire and Rescue Board, because that's the route that we've always taken based upon recommendations. But as elected officials, we also must understand that there is a need from the public that when you have twenty-seven thousand residents, and probably, and I'm shooting from the hip here, when we are in working hours, we could have in excess of a hundred thousand people here, that this local municipal government is responsible for the safety and security of. And it is 2025. I think there's no one up here that would say that they did not like the volunteer fire service, but in fact, they do, and they honor the volunteers, and they're respectful of the things that they continue to do for us. But we are at a point in 2025 where the transients, those that work here and the residents that live here deserve a guaranteed service. We're not going to continue to go back and forth. I know me, I'm not speaking for my colleagues now, I'm not going to continue to go back and forth and debate whether or not Swatara Township can have sustainability in the volunteer fire service just with volunteers. I've always drawn this line in the sand since I've been elected official. In order for us to do our jobs properly, you must have a guaranteed response that when you go home tonight and you dial 911, that a fire truck shows up to your house, not a if, shoulda, woulda, or coulda, or relying upon mutual aid. The times of just a volunteer fire service are over. So to answer some of your things, sir, I live on the end of Chambers Hill. My family was a product of an accident that took place where my children had to be cut out of a car by the same folks that I've served by for the last twenty-plus years. So I get it. It's real. So the debate over whether or not we're going to sustain a volunteer fire service or have a guaranteed fire service, in my book, is over, because it demands it. The residents deserve it. And I think when you keep coming up here with these problems that are as far as the volunteer problems, again, and I'll keep saying this, this isn't just locally here in Swatara Township, it's county level, it's other municipalities, it's other states. But the time to keep saying that the volunteers, we need more and more and more and more volunteers, they're not coming. There's nowhere else, probably in the state of Pennsylvania, that you can get the benefits that you get in Swatara Township as a volunteer. So they're not attracted to it. It's just not there. Let's be real. Come up here with some solutions. I'm tired of hearing the problem that the volunteer fire system is falling apart. We've been known that. The statistics tell us that. So I'm indifferent of some of the things and the approaches that you want to take to say, "Well, let's get into schools, let's get recruitment and retention." We've done all that. We've been into high schools, we've been in the elementaries, we've been in the junior highs, we've been in the VOTECs. We've put in hundreds of thousands of dollars into recruitment and retention. It's not working. It's not working, and the data shows something different. And I implore this board to make a decision, not only on the Chambers Hill Fire Company, but what do you want to do to make sure that the residents and the transients and the people that are employed here actually have a guaranteed fire service in 2025? And with that, I'm not going to touch on the data centers. I'm doing my own research. I made a vote to protect our residents, just to make sure that there was a location where they could go, that they couldn't go anywhere without the township. I still have a lot of research to do myself, but this is something I've been digging into month after month after month, looking at different locations, asking questions when I come upon people that has been involved with the data centers. You know, I ask the right questions, because I'm sure the tough decisions are going to come. And I'm one, as an elected official, there's the law, and I'm not here to tell you to do what your property outside the law. It is what it is. The law and the boundaries are set by that, and I'm not going to micromanage you on your property. And I've always been that way, and I think we should stay that way. As far as that, I'll say goodnight. Thank you for everyone that logged on, everyone that came out to join us. And again, I apologize. I am going to have to get up out of the seat and walk away, because I have to go to my employer who pays my bills and takes care of my family. But thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. First, I want to start with, again, offering my condolences to the Plissick family. And then I want to speak about the event that we had on Saturday. At the Labor Day event, I saw all five commissioners in attendance, and Commissioner Bowder, her former longtime commissioner, was also present with his family. So that was nice to see everyone together engaging with the community. It was very well-attended. There were lots of activities for families, and there was a band that did a phenomenal job again this year. I think everyone that was present enjoyed themselves. The food was delicious. They had lots of food trucks, lots of options for people. And again, I just think overall, it was a very good event. And so I'd like to thank Vice President Steele and Commissioner Connolly for expanding on the event that Commissioner Zubek started three years ago. And I want to make sure to thank Manager Trafca... And I want to make sure to thank Manager Trafca, our Public Works Department, our Police Department, Swatara Township Fire Rescue. I'd like to give a big thank you to our fire police. I want to thank all of the vendors as well as the Police Advisory and Recreation Board volunteers that were present. And there were a lot, like, again, there were lots of things there for families and kids to do. My, I couldn't get my kids out of the petting zoo. I spent like 40 minutes running around, petting ducks, bunnies, guinea pigs, there were goats. There were lots of fun things for everybody. We had rides this year that was different from last year, face painting. So again, thank everyone that was involved with bringing that to Swatara Township. I think it's nice when we can do events like this and give back to the residents and give them something to look forward to and enjoy and to instill a sense of community and just something to be proud of that, that your township is doing something like this for you. So the other thing that I want to do is announce that on Saturday, September 6th, we have a back-to-school movie night at Horner Park this time. This is the first time we're doing a movie night at that location. It's from 6:30 to 9:30 and the movie that we'll be showing is Minecraft movie. If you have kids in the age range that would enjoy that, make sure you come out and, and take the time to have a nice movie under the stars, hopefully have good weather, for whatever reason that continues to be a, a threat. Anytime we have an outdoor event, there tends to be bad weather in the forecast, but we were fortunate this weekend, I'm hoping that we'll be fortunate again this time as well. So with that, I want to thank everyone that takes the time to watch these meetings and thank everyone that comes to these meetings. This is probably a record time for us to be done, only an hour and a half. Everyone that is here, I hope you get home safe and then I will go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:35 PM.